I have to get the committee and the audience to calm down a little bit as we call the order. 7:01. Sorry ladies. Joining me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Way too many. Good evening, so we can start off tonight with our comments from the general public.
Everybody's beating down the door, you know.
Okay, so I guess we'll go right to the EAPC. Hello?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Is that...okay. I just would like to begin by saying Happy New Year to everyone. One of the things that I wanted to share, because this has been something that we...something that the teachers have been doing every year in the holiday time for at least a decade, going on two decades, is something called the Giving Tree. And this is something I wanted to talk about because I think it actually kind of is a good background to explain the nature of a lot of educators. Educators don't naturally like to brag a lot, and so it can be very uncomfortable. And on this Giving Tree, and in light of some things that have been going on, and then understanding an educator and what they do. So, this past December, there were 15 families that were sponsored by the educators of both the elementary school and the middle high school. These families represent about 40 to 50 children within the town of Carver. Along with that, we work alongside with the police officers. Police officers actually supported one of the families, as well as supplying multiple gifts to other children through working through the educator organizers. We also had Zach Kane Foundation supported a family through Zach Backpack Program, which was the first of its season, and it was a wonderful, amazing experience to actually have this...the foundation came and developed basically experiences for a family, like supporting things like gift certificates to the movie theater, to restaurants, not to mention gift certificates for the families to help buy presents for their family. And then gifts on the side. The family...Zach Backpack ended up being a backpack with lots of presents. So it ended up being an incredible thing that was done through the community outreach. There was also generous donations made by some educators and some people that were...I believe that may have worked in the school system prior. And at this season, we actually...we...the organizers ask the families what it is that they want. It's an anonymous program. And so we have a list, and the list is created...excuse me. And honestly, through the school system with basically the things that the children want, where the teachers or power professionals and support personnel can go and purchase these gifts, and then basically wrap them, and then we organize a way for them to be picked up. The lists were completely done a week and a half before they were due, and with the donation money, we got to actually extend the amount of gifts that we got to give out this year, which is incredible. It's the amount...this program just has lots of support, and every year seems just to grow that much more. Lots of community connections, so much email, very moving thoughts of appreciation. And ironically, I'm like, I think this is an awesome opportunity platform to discuss this, but the organizers of the program do not want to be named because it's that nature of the program. So that goes back to where I think just educators, it's hard because that's something we grapple with. We want to do and give good, but you know, do well, but not for any kind of known credit for the, you know, for the fact of just, we don't do it for the photo op, let's just say. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that is something that happens within our town, and I look forward to this year. So thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I'd like to say thank you for bringing that up too, Tim, because Scott and I were just talking about this a couple minutes ago, actually, that through the committee's request, we've asked for different presentations from employees, and they brought in what's happening in the classroom and what they're doing in school, and that's been really informative and I think good for us, but it's nice to hear that other side and those things that we don't get to see in here. So thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it. So I see no one from student council or captain's council?
Okay, so I have the student council update. So Jenna Sweeney, student council representative, is actually at...she's on the gymnastics team, and there's gymnastics meet this evening, so she is there. She recruited a replacement for herself tonight, who also figured out today that he's at a track meet. So I know we have a lot of...so we have events, so we have some of our students at track meets, some of our students at gymnastics, so we have some sports events going on, so I think that happened captain's council as well. But Jenna asked me to share the student council update, which I said I would do. So representing Jenna Sweeney, update from the student council. So student council's been working for the past month on the MASK Excellence Book. The MASK, which is the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's executive book, is in essence, the council has to put together a representation of what they do during the year, and then they can earn different types of ratings. The highest point value you can receive is 46, and above, I believe, above a 40 is a gold council. So for the past four years, Carver High School Student Council has earned the gold council and excellence title for the range of activities they do throughout the community. So they're in the process of putting the book together right now, which is just highlighting their community service projects, their school spirit events, and other things that the council's been doing throughout the year with the goal of having them earning that title of gold council again for the fifth consecutive year. They also wanted to be aware that student council secretary Brianna Laigquist is going to be running for the MASK Association of School Council Secretary at the annual spring conference in March. So one of our current members is going to try to run or win a statewide office, which is exciting, and congratulations to Brenner, and we wish her good luck. That conference, which is March 8th to 10th, there'll be a range of keynote speakers, workshops, a banquet, a spirit dance, and there's actually student councils from all over the state, and we wish Brenner the best of luck, and hopefully she will become the Massachusetts Association of School Student Council Secretary. This week, student council is going to be attending the winter conference, Wareham High School for the Winter mask. This conference is a night, and it's a roundtable meeting where we alternate groups and talk to different people from different schools, just to develop ideas of community service projects, school spirit activities. So it's a roundtable of the groups from southeast Massachusetts that get together and just share the different things they're doing within their schools. And then last piece they wanted to be aware is Jenna, our representative, and then Brenner Laigquist again, have actually also registered to attend the National Association of Student Council's conference in June. Historically, we do not send representatives to the national conference, but both of them are interested in doing that, and they've raised the funds to support them in doing that. So this conference is an opportunity to meet different people from across the nation and develop their leadership skills, and also an opportunity for them to get those same ideas and concepts that they can bring back to Carver from the National Association. So we are excited that both Brenner Laigquist and Jenna Sweeney will be attending the national conference in June of this year, and I'm sure Jenna will share a little bit about that as she returns to us. So that's our student council update. I do not have a captain's council update.
Well done. So, moving on to approval of minutes?
Motion to approve the regular session and the executive session minutes for December 11th?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, comments, changes? No?
Mr. Brenner, can I ask for the motion just to be modified that we will approve the executive session but not release?
Not to be released?
Yes. Is that right?
Yes.
Sure. So let's break it up. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular session minutes for December 11th.
So we'll strike that first motion then?
Right.
Okay. So motion made in seconded, no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And then the second?
And when's the release on?
Doesn't need it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for December 11th to be released at a later date?
Not to be released at this time.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, no questions, comments there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Moving on.
Reports from the superintendent. So our major presentation this evening is really around a preliminary budget presentation for FY '19. And Brad and I are going to break this into two pieces. The first piece, I'm going to take the lead on in terms of going through the concepts and looking at our educational blueprint, which we have laid out for ourselves as our mission and vision for the school district, and talk a little bit about what we feel like as an all team, as a leadership team, of services that we may need to expand over the next several years to carry out this mission. So my goal will be to do a little bit of review of the educational blueprint for the committee and for the community, what some of our goals are as a school district, and then say what things do we really need to do in terms of expanding or changing our services to have this mission come to life over the next five years. Now, there's a realization to that. There's a realization that, you know, we're probably not in the fiscal position to bring back all these services and all the staff that I'm going to talk about at the beginning of part of this presentation in the FY '19 budget. But I think it's important to make a statement of, these are things that do need to get built back over time, and we as a committee need to consider that, and we as the Carver community need to consider that, as we go forward to say, these are things we need to carry out our mission, to really achieve what we lay out within the educational blueprint. So I'm going to take that first piece of the presentation.
Scott, just a quick point along what you're saying, because when you say the word "expand," it almost sounds like you're trying to build upon, but it's more of a replacement of what was taken away.
It's a mix. So there are pieces in here that are going to be bringing back pieces that have been eliminated or cut over the past years. There are pieces here where we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, the nature of education has changed, and we just might need an expansion of services that we currently offer, but maybe they're not actually reductions from the past. Does that make sense? So it's a little bit of both. And what we did, how this presentation came about is over a couple meetings, I met with the administrative leadership team, had them analyze and look at the educational blueprint and say, from your perspective, looking at your schools, looking at the district, what are places in which we need to grow to achieve the initiatives laid out in this plan? You know, so my goal of this evening isn't necessarily to go through the plan word by word, it's really to tie it back to budget. But I'll do a general overview of the plan, then tie it back to some budget pieces that we think we need to build upon. And obviously, later on, we'll come back with a kind of a report out on where we are in the educational blueprint that'll probably be in the spring. In April and May, we'll do a much more formalized presentation of where are we on achieving each of these individual initiatives. So that's not necessarily the purpose tonight, but I feel like anytime we look at a budget discussion, we need to come back to what is our stated mission and goals? What's our vision? What's our big picture as a school district? What do we want to achieve, and how is budget related to that? But then also saying there's a reality piece too. You know, so in terms of the services we're talking about adding here, there would be some, maybe some significant expenses with that, which is a realization of maybe those aren't achievable within the FY '19 budget. But we want to put them out there that we'd like to see those things happen, hopefully in the next three to five years. Then we'll go back, and Brad will give us almost like a 10,000-foot view of, overview of where we are right now in terms of the FY '19 budget. And I guess I'll lay it out upfront, and maybe we can review it again at the end, is kind of our thought process of how we're going to approach the budget season as a whole would be to give the 10,000-foot overview today, see where we are in terms of services we're looking to have for next year, and put that in relationship to what the town is currently proposing as our number for next year, and see what the difference is between those two things. Then we come back in our first meeting in February. In our first meeting in February, we had, there's still some questions in this budget, and some of those questions will be answered, and Brad will talk about that a little bit, how those questions might be answered. So the numbers, there's a chance that some of these numbers are going to change, modify a little bit. And so we'll come back in February, we'll make a presentation of, okay, so these things were question marks, now they're knowns, so we can put some hard numbers in the budget. And then also, we might all, we'll come back with a presentation of, if we were to try to meet the town's number, this is what we would recommend as ways to meet the town's number, what reductions we'd have to make to meet the town's number. Then we'd come back, and I'm going to make a proposal tonight that we add a meeting at the end of February. And we did that last year, we had two meetings in February, and we have a meeting after February vacation that last week, and at that time, we'd have the formal budget hearing. And then the committee could make a determination if they wanted to vote the budget number that night, or if you wanted to prolong it into March and vote the budget number at our March meeting prior to town meeting in April. You know, so we have some opportunities there. So our thought process is kind of 10,000-foot view with some question marks, but given us where we are right now in terms of relation to the town's number. A tighter presentation beginning of February, maybe a little bit more detail. We've actually talked about specifically, we give some more detail around the special education budget and get into that number a little bit more, and you'll see that as we go through the presentation tonight, why we're going to do that in February. And then with, you know, what would have to happen for us to meet the town's number? What would we recommend to the committee to meet the town's number? And then come back at the end of February, and the committee can make a decision on, you know, what our next steps will be. And so there's some opportunities for some movement here in terms of where we are. So that's kind of the big picture of what's going to happen this evening. Any questions on that? All right, so let's get into the educational blueprint piece of it. And I'm not going to...well, I'm like, maybe I am going to read a part of this PowerPoint, maybe I'm going to read some of these PowerPoint slides tonight, and it says it's never really out of go, but I think it's important, just a general statement of what is the vision that the school committee has approved for the district? The Carver School Committee is dedicated to continuous improvement and will collaborate to promote high standards to ensure all students become empowered learners and responsible citizens through a comprehensive curriculum that inspires students to learn and think creatively in a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment. Based on that, whatever our core values, and as we look at budget, I think as you look at budget, you have to look at core values. What do we really stand for? What do we believe in? What do we want the Carver schools to be about? And these core value statements really should be an epitome of those ideas. And as we go into the budget season, you know, we have to look at all of these things, but you know, obviously, we have to look at that third bullet. Decisions should be made in the best interest of students. We have to look there, it has to be, in my mind, that has to be the most important one. And not saying the other core values are not important. And I'm not going to read them to you, they're up on the screen, you all have them in front of you, you can see them. But I think that, you know, over the next two months, as we start to make decisions about our district, about our community, about our budget, we have to come back to that third bullet of, are we making decisions that are in the best interest of students and doing everything we can within the community to support our students? Under this blueprint, we established four strategic objectives, and these are the generic statements of what those objectives are. Number one, we want to support safe schools. And as I said, I'm not going to go through the whole blueprint itself, it's actually linked on there, and at the end, Meredith, after I go through the objectives, maybe we'll just pull it up for a second. But, you know, the whole, support safe schools isn't just about school safety from a physical standpoint, that's also from emotional well-being standpoint of students. So that's a pretty comprehensive idea. And the reality is, there's been a lot of discussion, it was actually the focus of the faculty meeting at the middle high school this afternoon, was about social-emotional learning, and what are we doing to support students who are struggling with social-emotional issues? And we've talked about this a little bit as a committee, the reality is, more and more students are facing anxiety, depression. You know, we don't have to go through all kinds of specific labels, but students are struggling more with social-emotional issues for a variety of reasons. And it's not even necessarily our responsibility to look at all those variety of reasons, it's the reality of those students are in our classrooms, and what can we do to support teachers, administrators, guidance counselors, what can we do to support everyone to support those students? So when we look at supporting safe schools, clearly, physical safety is a priority, but it also goes to the concept of emotional well-being, and what are we doing to support the emotional well-being of our students? Engage the community. So that's one of our strategic objectives. We do want to partner with Carver, the town of Carver, the community of Carver, the citizens of Carver, the teachers of Carver. You know, we want to work with everybody and come together on achieving the best education we can for all of our students. We want to enhance teaching and learning. And so obviously, a lot of what the school, a lot we're doing as a school district, hopefully, across the board, is that we're working consistently towards having everyone in the district do their job a little bit better than they can do it. You know, so my goal is I need to be a better superintendent next year than I am this year. And we all have to take that attitude of, we want to enhance our performance. And if everybody is working towards that concept, if we want to enhance our performance, improve and do a little bit better, the reality is, what's that going to mean is that students are going to perform, students are going to learn, students' performance is going to improve, and the outcomes for students will be better. So a lot of our goals are around what can we do to enhance what's happening in our classrooms on a daily basis? And then a big piece for the community of Carver, and this is, you know, it's interesting. So you all know that I'm part of the new superintendent's induction program, and I'm meeting with superintendents on a regular basis, we have a group called the Lighthouse Superintendents. The Lighthouse Superintendents are all the superintendents pretty much on the South Shore, on the Lighthouse Schools, Duxbury, Cohasset, places that have lighthouses. Carver doesn't have a lighthouse, but we are part of the Lighthouse Superintendents. Actually, I don't know, maybe there is a lighthouse someplace in Carver, I just don't know where it is. But, you know, and then there's the South Shore Superintendent, who's actually a little bit larger group, a my initial group. And, you know, I see different districts' strategic improvement plan, we call it educational blueprint, whatever they happen to call it. And if you look at their, if you look at what's on their plans, you see a lot of commonality. You see support safe schools, you see engage the community, you see enhanced teaching and learning. Maybe not those exact words, but conceptually, same idea. I do think leveraging leadership policy and funding is a little bit different for us within the community of Carver. I haven't seen this on other plans, and I think part of our reality is there, is right now, this community over the last few years has faced some budget tough times. We've talked about the concept of operating budgets maybe aren't funded fully the way they should, and to the appropriate point where they should be. And the town's made some decisions, and which we could argue, and I'm not going to, I'm trying not to go off on a whole tangent on this concept, but, you know, we've made some decisions to support capital projects, which is a benefit for us. We have a beautiful, brand-new school going in, and I don't say that as a negative, it's not intended as a negative for the audience, but, you know, and we've done a capital project for the Accelerator Repair Project, the middle high school, for roof, boiler, doors, and windows. But all, and we've built a new fire station, and we're doing all these things. And there's discussion about building a new police station, which I support, and so, but it all comes with choices, it all comes with balancing. And so I think this whole objective is, what can we do as a committee, what can we do as an administrative leadership team, what can we do working with the teachers, to try to leverage some of the concerns that we have budgetarily within the community of Carver to get all these things done, but then also have an appropriate education for our students? And what decisions are we making to have those things happen? And I don't necessarily see that objective when I look at other people's plans, because I do think that's a little bit of a uniqueness for us within Carver, in terms of addressing all those issues, and living within our budget, but also doing everything we can to support our students. And that's a tough balance, and it's a tough balance that I've struggled with as a superintendent in my first few years, and I, and hopefully, so hopefully what I'm not going to struggle with going forward, but I have a sense that maybe over the next few years, we will. So I think that's a little bit of a unique thing for us. So what we did is, and this isn't everything...oh, sorry, yeah, so I said, well, yeah, why don't you pull, you can pull up the plan for a minute. So we've actually created the plan as, and under each of those objectives that's going through, of support safe schools, engage the community, enhance teaching and learning, each school has identified some specific initiatives. Like I said, my goal this evening isn't to go through those initiatives. Eventually, before the end of the year, we'll come back, I'll have Mrs. Hawley, Mrs. Vastis, some of the administrative leadership team, give a more formalized presentation on what are we doing to achieve those initiatives and where are we? But I just wanted to put the document out there, let people see it. One thing we've done this year in terms of the educational blueprint is, we've actually done a hard copy, and we've actually given it to every office space, teacher's classroom, we've given a copy to everyone, partly because we wanted to have teachers individually look at it and say, can I build some of my individual goals around this plan, which obviously that's going to help the plan come to fruition, but then also that constant reminder of, these are the things we want to achieve, these are the things we always want to be working to. So this version of it is actually hangs in classrooms, you can see it throughout the district. And we'll come back to the blueprint itself and give a more formalized presentation in the spring, in terms of where we are in terms of achieving some of those initiatives. So what we did as an administrative leadership team is, we kind of went through and said, looking at these concepts, these objectives, what things might we need to do to have, or what are our needs budgetarily to carry out this mission? So under, and so, and this isn't everything, the list that was made by the administrative team was a little more detailed, but again, we wanted to have a big picture idea of seeing where we maybe need to grow. So our recommendations over the next three to five years is, we'd like to see us grow in some of these areas. Expand the FSP program, the Family Success Partnership Support Program, district-wide. Remember last year, we actually had a presentation from our counselor? This is a program that we do in conjunction with Reed's Collaborative, that's providing counseling supports, and actually a wide range of supports to families outside of the school day. Sarah Cochran is our counselor, she came and made a presentation in the spring, and she actually, so we're still involved in this program, and, you know, so we have some families who are struggling with homelessness, we have some families that are struggling with even putting food on the table, those types of things. We have some families that have struggled with some deaths in the family. And she's actually going out and providing wraparound services outside the school day with the families in their homes. And under the program currently, we can support five families at a time. So as one family's, you know, that's her maximum load for us. And obviously, if one family feels like they've, all their supports are put in place, and they have, now they're gaining other supports, she can move on to another family, so it's not a stagnant five, it changes throughout the year, but it's a max of five at a time. And the reality is, the families we're seeing that need this level of support. And it's interesting, these are supports that sometimes we've offered in the past through our regular counselors, but the families just haven't accessed them, for whatever those reasons happen to be. There'd be a variety of reasons of maybe why they're not accessing that service from our counselors during the school day. The reality of having someone that can go to their home at 6 o'clock at night, sometimes just makes it more feasible, who can provide in-home counseling, in-home services, is just, there's a lot of benefit to that. And as a reality, we're seeing an increased need. We feel like we could, the district, based on the levels of needs of our students, we could definitely support more than five families, but that's all we're currently having in our budget, and that's all that's budgeted for next year. And on that same ideas, the elementary school feels like, again, based on the number of students facing social-emotional crisis, that they would benefit tremendously from the addition of a school adjustment counselor, that they could use one additional school adjustment counselor at that level. Also, district-wide, behavioral support specialist, is, that's a position that was actually reduced that we could, over time, that we could bring back. The adjustment council and the FSP were not pass reductions, so those would be expansion of current services, where the behavioral support specialist would be a return of a support that was reduced. And all those are around the concept of not physical safety of students, but social-emotional safety of students, that we can do some more as a district, based on just the amount of the need we're seeing for students who are struggling with social-emotional issues. Enhancing teaching and learning. Strong feeling that we, and I, we did not prioritize these, and they're not, these are not listed in a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 order, we're not looking to prioritize any of these, it's just the list is, return the kindergarten parents to full-time. So as part of our reductions last year, we reduced the kindergarten parents to part-time, and we just feel like it's in the need, it's a need in support of all of our kindergarten students to have a full-time parent in our kindergarten classrooms. Computer science teacher at the middle high school, that, I don't know, I don't know how, ES, I don't know what MES is, so I apologize for that. So, at the middle high school, we made the change, thank you. You know, so obviously, we cut, that was a reduction last year, we did cut our computer science teacher. We feel like they, bringing, returning a computer science teacher full-time to the middle high school is appropriate. The reality is, the... The reality is, the, the range of technology services that our students require really calls for us to be looking to do some more innovative programs for students. You know, the reality is, it's, it's unusual for a middle high school to have no computer science programs, and I think it's, it's a tremendous need to build back. A technology integration specialist at the elementary school, where someone, and that's going more towards the idea of having a specialist on by to work with teachers how to best integrate technology in their classrooms on a daily basis. That would be a change in position, so that wasn't necessarily a position that was reduced in the past. A reading intervention teacher at the elementary school, which is a past reduction, and the fifth-grade teacher, which was a past reduction at the elementary school. And then, going on to leveraging leadership policy and funding, is increasing professional development line items to support universal design for learning, and social-emotional learning, and technology integration for teachers. We feel like the professional development has taken a little bit of hit in our overall budget, so that is past budget reductions have reduced our professional development line item. We feel like we could increase our professional development line item and bring some more support from students. We're also going to, there's also some concern that, over time, that Title II-A, which is a federal grant to support professional development, there is discussion of that grant either being cut or reduced. That grant brings in significant money to our school district. If there was a major reduction in Title II-A funding, that would be a huge concern of ours. What's that, what was that, Title II?
I think it's fifty-five.
Sixty thousand?
No.
Not?
It was forty-five.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So that, that would be, that would be a significant reduction for us if we lost Title II-A funding. And there's definitely a concern that that is on the block at the federal government level. Grade-level lead teachers, we feel like we, and I think we'd make a proposal to maybe, and this would have to obviously be a discussion with our teachers, may make a proposal of having that position look a little different, but bring back the grade-level teachers in a, in a forum, because we feel like there's a value for that, in terms of supporting all the teachers within the district and the administration. And then increase supports for PBS programming district-wide. As I said, this was not, this isn't everything that was necessary on our list, but it was, we wanted to kind of make that statement of, you know, the reality is, this district has taken some significant cuts over the last several years. Specifically, you know, last year we took a significant cut, it was well, close to one point three million dollars, over one point two million dollars in reductions. And eventually, some of those things are going to have to come back to really support the level of services that we need within the district. So before we went into our formal FY19 budget presentation, we wanted to put those, some of those things out there and say, these things aren't in the budget presentation we're going to make next. These are just things saying, these are needs that we feel like, over time, next two to five years, we feel like we need to move in that direction and add these supports, around social-emotional learning, around increasing some of our staff, around maybe using some of our funding a little bit differently. The only thing, there is a piece in here where, within the regular budget presentation, and I sort of just for clarity point, we, we are looking to increase our professional development budget line item by twenty thousand dollars, just out of concern that there might be that Title II-A cut, and we want to at least start to address that, but we, we didn't fully address it, we didn't put the full forty-five thousand in. So, that's kind of where, that's kind of our overall in terms of where we need to go in terms of carrying out our district-wide mission. Any questions or thoughts on this piece before we move on to the more formalized actual budget presentation?
I'm actually surprised not to see anything about restoration of an art and music teacher at the elementary school. I mean, we had an outpouring of, you know, upheaval of, of the town, that was one of the biggest things people complained about. I'm actually surprised that nothing's in here. I mean, not saying it's...
Again, not saying, oh no, not saying that we wouldn't consider those, and this wasn't, this wasn't the full list of every position, but this was, so when we looked at this, you know, so we've looked at enhanced, so obviously, we weren't going to come back and say, we need to add one point two million dollars worth of teachers back into the budget for everything that we cut last year. So, we did do some prioritizing, so going back to that enhancing teaching and learning slide, and that's a legitimate question. As we, as the administrative leadership team looked at it, we prior, these are not, this is not our prioritized list of those positions, but in compared to other positions that were cut, yes, this would, these positions would put it as a priority over other positions. So, the kindergarten parish, the fifth-grade teacher, the reading interventionist, the possible addition of a technology integration specialist, were put in above the music or the art teacher. And obviously, the community could have a different feeling about that, and could clearly share that.
I understand, I mean, I think it'd be good to look at, I mean, especially when the new school opens, to see how much can, the existing art and music teachers can handle there, and if the expansion could be...
Andy, let's, um, let's let him go through the budget and see where we're at with the budget, because I think to Scott's point, there's already things that we, that, this is a list of things that already aren't included.
Oh, I know.
So what you're inferring right now is to add more to the list of things we can't include right now.
I'm just saying, you know, as every department goes through a wish list of things that, in through the town, this is kind of like our wish list.
Yeah, and I, and I think, absolutely, and I think it's, I think it's a very fair question to say, you know, in terms of, sometimes, in terms of public response, there was definitely a public response around the reduction of the art and the music teacher. And at the time, the commit, at the time, my presentation at the time was, we did some comparison to the art and music services of other districts, and, and I made the argument, which some people disagreed with, I made the argument at the time that the amount of services we were going to offer those courses was very similar to what was offered on the elementary schools. Now, people could identify other individual elementary schools where the level of service was more, but, but there were also elementary schools with a level of service that we're currently offering was consistent with what they were currently offering. Doesn't make it right or wrong, but at the, it's, we always, I always want to go back and remind people, we did not eliminate art and music from the elementary school. And sometimes I felt like that discussion became a little bit of a discussion of, we eliminated art and music from the elementary school, which we did not. We reduced the amount of services of those courses. And, but we did eliminate technology at the, at the middle high school. We did eliminate a fifth-grade teacher, increased class sizes there. You know, so none of these things were great choices, I loved, I, I would not be opposed to adding back a, an art or, an art or a music teacher. And, but, when we went back and looked at prioritizing these particular pieces, they, the elementary, elementary leadership team put the kindergarten parish, the reading intervention teacher, and the fifth-grade teacher higher on the list than the art and music teacher, but I think it's a legit, a very, very legitimate question.
No, I just, I just wanted to bring it up, because we're talking, we're talking about the ten-thousand-foot view here.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we were pretty clear to people that, that we didn't eliminate art and music from the elementary school, and we were in, in parity with other towns with services provided, but as these are being listed, I think it's also fair to, to bring those positions back into the...
Right, and obviously, we, we were reducing what we were offering, because we were offering a really, a high level of art and music.
Right.
So, kids were getting it on, you know, within that, within that cycle, within their art arts rotation, they were getting it, you know, some kids two or three times in the cycle, which was really, which is a great thing, is not, clearly not a bad thing.
And the biggest issue of all these is that these aren't in the budget, so, I mean, we have to find the money anyway for any of those.
Well, not only are they not in the budget, but as we've discussed a lot, we're building a building that is set up for them. So there are two art rooms and two music rooms, and one teacher in each.
Right, so the room, right, the rooms that will not be utilized, which I think is also a good point when we talk about that concept of levering, leveraging, leveraging policy and funding, is, right now, we're building a new elementary school, in which there will be an open art room, there will be an open music room, and there will be an open fifth-grade classroom, based on the budget that we're presenting this evening. So the budget we're presenting this evening is not saying, let's go to six fifth-grade teachers, but there's going to be six fifth-grade classrooms. So there'll be three empty rooms in that building, based on the budget we're going to present this evening.
And I, just to add to that, Andy, because I think, not to dissuade the importance of that, because I'm on board with you, and I, I try to bring that up quite consistently about those empty rooms. But we do, I think, even go beyond, because with two children in, that went through the elementary system, Mr. Howard does a fantastic job with the kids there, and that's something that a lot of districts don't have the opportunity with, and, and Ms. Chiokas has done a great job with the chorus. So, beyond the regular general ed music, the, the district still offers quite a bit of musical opportunities for students too, so I, I think the district does a great job doing that. I'm fully on board with you in filling those rooms up with who belongs in there, man.
I'm not saying they didn't...
Without a doubt.
Yeah, you...
Nope.
No, I think, as I said, Andy, I think it's a, it's a point well-taken to say...
Should be on the list.
Yeah, should be on the list. Very fair.
Thank you.
Any other? Then we'll shift over to... So what, what, I will do a little preference for Brad, then I'll turn over to Brad. So what we're actually proposing here for the FY19 budget, it's not a level service budget, it is a bit, it is a bit, a bit beyond the level service budget. So we will identify the specific pieces that we're adding, and for what we're playing out tonight. Some of those things are, there's just some requirements that as a district we need to meet, that we need to add those pieces. And then some of them are part of the reductions that we took from Pat last year, that we're saying, you know, those reductions are really limiting us in some ways, we need to add some pieces back. Some are also just costs that are tied to the new elementary school. So this is, this is a bit beyond a level service budget that's being presented this evening.
Still in my thunder here.
All right, sorry, Brad. Now, I'll turn it over to you.
He's going to let you do the interpretive dance.
Yeah, I'll pass on that one, I'll leave it to you here. All right, so day one of FY19, here we go. So how we'll do this is similar to last year, I broke this down by DESI function code, the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, and nine thousand series, I'll go over them specifically as we go through them. So the first one is the one thousand DESI function code, that represents district-wide leadership and administration. This includes all school committee and central office expenses, including tech salaries as well, no tech equipment specifically, just salaries. As you can see, we're actually requesting below one percent increase on this line item, no major changes to the thousand series. Two thousand is the instructional services series, this represents professional development, curriculum, technology, equipment, and licensing, principals, teachers, guidance, all of those expenses. The key increases in here is there's twenty-six thousand for tech equipment, ten thousand of that is earmarked for the district-wide fixes that we mentioned before, in terms of who's going to cover the cost for a projector and the, and the electrical behind it, all those modifications, that's included in here, and sixteen of it is represented from new computers for the middle high school, correct? It's just desktop replacement schedules, and there's, I want to say four hundred in there, or the forty, excuse me, four hundred would be way too much.
I was going to say four hundred.
Twenty thousand for district-wide PD, as Scott mentioned, we're kind of fearful that Title II-A might get cut out of the federal budget. This doesn't fully cover that forty-five thousand, but what this does do is, right now, we think we're going to have a small carryover amount from this current year's Title II-A grant, so we'll be able to roll that over into next year, so it helps buffer it a little bit. Fifteen thousand is built in for Cover Elementary School, supplies and materials, that was a riff of last year's budget, and same for twenty-five thousand for the middle high school, supplies and materials, that's built back in. A point-five ESL teacher is built in here, and that's based on our shuffle of students moving from the elementary to the middle school level. Step increases and longevity are added for all positions off current contracts, so there is no cola in this budget at all, but any contract that we have in place, the step for each individual has been moved out. And thirty thousand is included in this for the teacher lane changes. Last year when we presented our budget in FY18, we really originally did not have that in the budget. We moved over thirty thousand from, going back in memory, I forget exactly what line item it was, but we had a significant savings, somewhere in the line, that was able to transfer over, cover that. It came out to actually, this year, we had twenty-five thousand in teacher lane change movement, so thirty thousand again is a fair estimate for going forward. Three thousand other services, this includes transportation, health insurance, excuse me, health for nursing and athletic expenses. The major increases in here is a four point seven six percent increase. It's for homeless transportation, which right now is at ten thousand, we want to bump it up to twenty, because we've seen an increase, and that, and Scott mentioned that in his presentation, and also sped contracted services for the routes we can provide, that's projected to be at one forty right now. Again, these are a little bit higher than what we have in the books right now, but as you guys know, we can have a movement at any given time that eats that up, so one forty in there. Here's one thing that I wanted to mention too, the fifty-dollar club user fee is not included as an offset. That's something we can discuss as the budgets develop, but keeping in line with where we are, in terms of last year, I wanted to compare an apples-to-apples budget, and that's right, that's why I took this off in that. But as we go through discussions and look at the budget more in-depth, the future presentations, if the committee desires to add that back in, that's something we can really discuss.
Brad, real fast, what is sped contracted services at currently?
It's one twenty.
One twenty?
Yep. The four thousand is the operations, this includes all utilities, buildings, and grounds expenses. We're only at, requesting a three point two six, the majority of that is based off the new building. Savings on supplies and natural gas and electric rates are actually going to offset all of the increase that we're projecting for Cover Elementary School electric bill. Until we go for a full year, we really don't know where that's going to come out, but I think budgeting a thirty thousand dollar increase cost is a fair number, and it actually flatlines, there was no change in any of our utility bills between natural gas and electric between all buildings, it's kind of flatlined. We did sign on to a twenty-five percent savings for the natural gas supply rate, so that's, it's huge for the town and the school side. And if it goes above overall, the overall number in between utility lines, we do have the utility reserve account set up, I forget the exact balance on it, but it's adequate to cover any extra that we have. Increase to Cover Elementary School cleaning and supplies line and materials, we didn't put in a big buffer for any major fixes that, for equipment or anything that needs to be touched at the elementary school, because we're covering our one-year warranty for the new building, so there's really no need to jack that up, we can discuss that at future FY20 budgets. And we also included a ten thousand dollar increase that, for summer help, ceiling tiles, that is in the capital improvement plan, so for the middle high school, the corridors, the main, main lobby areas, those will all be replaced, so I think in effort to help out our concerns, adding on, I think it was nine thousand last year we spent for painting, we still have nine thousand earmarked for painting, but also add ten on to have a helpful ceiling tiles in our budget.
Ask a question, Brad?
Yep, go ahead.
Do you mind?
No, please.
Through the operations, what's the reflection of the town-wide facilities plan that was put in place? Is there any savings for us on this, or was it kind of a wash?
Right now, it's a wash, that's how we have a budget, we still actually, both sides need to sit down, and we've had preliminary discussions on it, but right now, it's, it's actually a budgeted, a little small increase for what we had for salaries for last year, but that's where we are right now.
Okay.
There's no shuffling of funds for what we had currently in our budget over to a town share, town expense line right now.
Nope. I know it's relatively new.
Yeah, exactly, and it still needs to work itself out, and how we're going to go about doing all that, but right now, for next fiscal year, there's nothing proposed on that.
Okay.
Five thousand is fixed charges, this includes retirement contributions, health insurance, life insurance, and all of our other optional insurances. Fifty thousand dollar increase is to Plymouth County Retirement Board, this actually levels out in future years, I think we have three years data of exactly how much it's going to cost us, so we have one more big hit, which is the fifty thousand just for the school side, and after that, it kind of levels out, I think it's like a two thousand dollar increase or decrease going forward after that for FY20. There's a thirty thousand dollar increase to property liability, and this is based off the new elementary school building. And in terms of health insurance, we're actually seeing a forty-five thousand dollar decrease based on new enrollment, that should be number, not percentage, excuse me, I apologize for that. And right now, I have budgeted a ten percent rate increase, again, estimate, I'll discuss that as we go forward, but it would have been probably, we're looking at, we would have a forty, a four hundred thousand dollar increase had we stayed on GIC one, and we had a ten percent increase on health insurance. So for this current fiscal year, move to GIC three actually helps us significantly. And actually, I'm on that slide, this number actually also includes eighty thousand dollars that was on the countable four in terms of the mitigation fund as well, so that's included in this. The nine thousand series is the out-of-district programs, this includes all special ed, vocational education, and collaborative education outside of the district, it includes all move-ins and increases in tuitions, and for example, I put, it was a ten thousand dollar increase last year, which got approved in, I think, late June, for PACT Academy, went from thirty-six thousand dollars to forty-six thousand dollars, I know I mentioned that in a few meetings, but this will now impact our budget for FY19. And this is a represent, it's representing a fifty-one point eight seven percent increase. Please be alarmed though, that this, there's a lot of variables in this that we will discuss Please be alarmed though that this, there's a lot of variables in this that we will discuss at our next meeting. Offsets have shuffled a little bit, so there's actually left less offsets coming off of that number. I know this is an high opening percentage, but overall, we're actually kinda in line with where we are for FY18. A big part of it is the town picking up. This FY18 number doesn't include the towns portion picking up $200,000 from the specialized reserve account that we were available for. It's, it's covered in FY18, but it's not in our budget until FY19, because that's how the funding mechanism is set up. So we will go in much more detail at our next meeting.
Yeah, and the only other piece at on-site as well. We said, I told you we were gonna break this a little bit, we'll break this down a little bit more, because obviously you're gonna see this is where there's a fairly significant increase. And also part of that is we do have, which we have mentioned before at previous meetings, we do have two new out-of-district students who've come in, which are gonna be cost shares for us next year, which were their full-day tuition students, that those two students themselves are gonna cost the district around $200,000 to $220,000. So those, you know, that, that's a reality in that piece as well. But we'll break, in our February presentation, we'll break this number down a little bit more, give a comparison of where we are in terms of number of out-of-district students that we're actually, with the goal of really saying, we're, we're providing a tremendous number of programs within district. We're doing a great job of keeping students in district. And we've just had some unforeseen things happen to us that's gonna increase this number a little bit. But we'll give a little more detail for the community on that number at that time. Like we said today, we just wanted to kinda give the big picture overview.
But to our operational cost standpoint, this is a 51, 52% increase to our operational cost in terms of budgeting. So the next slide, this is the amounts above the level service budget that Scott mentioned. Again, it's the Carver Elementary Supplies going up 15,000. The middle high school supplies going up 25. As much as this, this is above a level service budget, this is bringing it back to what level service was in FY17. Yep, and actually I say FY17, and it was reduced in FY17, so it's actually FY16 was the last time these were actually fully funded. Tech, district-wide fixes. I mentioned the breakdown of the 26,000. 16 of that, after talking with the county district, we think can be flexed to the capital line, so that'll save our actual operational budget by 16,000. The district-wide PD line of 20,000. Facilities line items related to Carver Elementary School, the new building, is 30,000. And the .5 ESL teacher is 50,000. And a recap of the offsets, I apologize, it's tight to see on there. But for Grant 240 and 305, the amount is 650,000 that we're projecting to offset. For circuit breaker, it's 225,000. This is down from this current year's, that we had 250 originally projected, we're actually gonna use right now. 262 is on the books being used, but I'm thinking we're gonna actually have to eat into our reserve balance that we're trying to build up, another 100,000 to offset what we're currently responding for for this fiscal year. But again, we'll dive more into that in our next meeting. Tuition in is students who are tuitioned into one of our programs. We have, we're projecting right now 50,000. The pre-K fee, the number actually of enrollees went up significantly from what we originally projected. I think that number last year was 22,000, was our projected write-off. That we're gonna move up to 32,000. School choice, we're gonna write off 125,000. Athletics, we're projecting to take in 63, just over 63,000. Middle high school intramurals is gonna be 10,000 again, and the parking fee is gonna be 3,000. As you see the account offsets on the right, when I actually give you a copy of the overall budget, you can link where these are charged to and offset to right into the budget document.
And as we had talked about in the fall, we would, we said we would not bring back a student activities fee in the proposed FY19 budget. So that is not listed here as an offset, and we're not proposing to bring back a student activities fee. That was part of, when we took, when we, when the committee voted to not have that fee, part of that, that was the question at the time, is would we look to bring these back in FY19? We said, you know, I said my goal would be to not do that. Obviously, there was a lot of concern, you know, not to get into each of the fees individually, but at the time, there was a lot of concern specifically around that fee, so we're not proposing to bring that back.
So here's the recap. So FY19 proposed budget is 23,729,261. That's our school as presented tonight. The FY19 town budget recommendation is 23,259, or excuse me, 23,259,768. That leaves us a shortfall of roughly 470,000. Again, that's pending contract negotiations and how all those go. And if you look at the overall percentage increase, the town is proposing an overall increase to our budget of 2.15. The school as presented tonight is a 4.21% increase. And here we have our items still in play. I apologize when we rolled this over from PowerPoint to Google Share, it did not really translate over well. The health insurance rates, so right now, I mentioned we have 10% in our estimate right now. Early preliminary from Gateway Health Group has been 8%, very early preliminary. We went through this exercise last year where we thought it was gonna be 8%, and ended up being, I think, 11 and 20 for each individual one, so.
We're hoping for 8%.
We're hoping for 8%. So if each percentage comes down, it's roughly $30,000 of savings to our operational budget. Again, if that comes in at 8%, we're 60 grand to the better.
And that, that's a number we'll have more formal.
February is our, is our agreement with the town on how we fund that. So by February, if 8% is what our preliminary number is, that's what we'll use.
And we'll come back, so when we come back, when we come back February, we'll have a solid number on that.
Yep. Our vote tuitions. Right now I have four students budgeted on our books right now. Actually, this number is over 20,000. We have one graduating, so that, this number actually is 40,000 in question mark. I have budgeted 40,000 over what is known for tuitions. But again, we won't, no finalized numbers all the way up until the end of the school year before people commitments, and that's actually where that PD line was funded out of last year, now that I remember correctly. We had on our books four students going to vocational schools, only three ended up going last year, and we shuffled that money into, offset the teacher lane changes last year. So 40,000 that number should be for both tuitions. Again, and this could go down to the last day of the school year, so it's really, it's, once I get preliminary numbers, hopefully we only have three, and I can guarantee you we can take 20 off, but this is not something that we can totally hit for 40,000 until we get better numbers. Out-of-district tuitions, we have 96,000 roughly on our books, and again, this is just me throwing out a number there, looking with care and it's got to see who do we have on our radar that we may be able to, that may be graduating, depending on how credits fall, and also who we may be able to bring back in district that's out of district right now. So 96,000 represents two graduate students at PACT Academy.
And, and one of them is definitely a senior who's on track to graduate. You know, but we'll, we don't wanna, it's, we'll, we'll come, we'll have a better knowledge of that in February as well. Of that student's on finalized track to graduate, and then maybe we take them off, off the books.
And the other option, which again, I don't, I don't know Scott, how much detail you wanna go on tonight, but tonight, but is school choice expansion at the middle high school level. That would bring in large influx of cash to offset our budget. Again, that's up to the school committee to decide, but that's an item to look at.
Yeah, so, so I think, I think we'll come back with a more solid recommendation in February. I think we've begun to lay the groundwork of having a discussion about opening up school choice to other grade levels beyond kindergarten. You know, it is a revenue source. The reality is we're losing some kids to school choice. We wanna, we wanna maintain those kids in the district, but also, we might have an opportunity to bring some students in. You know, at the elementary level, we probably don't have the space to bring students in for school choice beyond kindergarten. But at the middle high school level, we probably do have some opportunities there. So it might have to be, you know, each school choice student is $5,000. So if the committee decided to open up 20 slots at the middle school, or middle high school, that would be the goal of bringing in a $100,000 offset, which that $100,000 offset could be applied to our shortfall. So I think it is something that the committee's really gonna have to consider. Technically, we don't take that school choice vote, and I have to look at the procedure on that, actually. Historically, it's done in May, so we have to go, I have to actually check with DESI in terms of time if it's required that it's done in May. Is, so, we, we might have to take a look at that, and maybe the committee might have to make a decision to at least consider the concept of school choice. So I'm putting that out there tonight, people can start thinking about it, ask questions about it, put it out to the community in terms of what questions would they have around bringing in some school choice students at the middle high school level? What grades would we wanna do that at? What would we be looking at specifically? Because remember, we can establish all the, as with kindergarten, we can establish the criteria. We can say, you know, just, just throwing something out, we could say, five students in grade 6, 7, 8, and 9. We could say 29th graders, we could, you know, so you, I think it makes sense to do it in transition years. You know, that's where you might get your biggest chance of getting someone going from, oh, I don't, I'd like to have the opportunity to go to Carver High School in 9th grade. I'd like to have the opportunity to go to, you know, my, our school, middle school is, doesn't start till 7th grade. Or our middle school starts in 5th grade, or, you know, so I think the transitionary years might be the, the years to look at versus, you're a 10th, 11th seniors. But we can talk about that in a little more detail. But I think that might be a realistic option, it's something, something we've begun to lay the groundwork for at least.
You got an L very high level.
Yeah, so clearly we can be far more detailed next month. We'll have two meetings to be able to talk about this before any kind of vote or discussion happens, and that could be even put off if we need to. But for now, are there any questions or anything that stands out to anybody that they'd like to ask before we move forward?
I'd just say that the major slide would be slide eight, would be the out-of-district programs, and just really break that one down for us.
Absolutely. And I think if we are gonna have a, a school choice discussion for the high school, maybe some statistics with that as far as class sizes and numbers and all that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
All right, see you in London. Moving on to the school building report.
So the elementary school continues to move along on time and on budget. It's always impressive to see the building taking shape. You know, so actually on, in the A Wing, which is the wing closest to the street, that, how they're doing the project is everything's happening in A Wing, then B Wing, then C Wing. So A, A Wing's the most advanced. If you go into the A Wing, they actually have some flooring down now. So there's floors, there's cabinets, there's walls, there's, it's beginning to look like a real classrooms. It's beginning to look like a real school. It's just always impressive to see how much work they're getting done over there. You know, really, we have, we've run into minimal, minimal problems over there, really not any. The project continues to move on time. The project continues to move on budget. Our last mile, our latest milestone is on last Friday. We finalized our technology budget, so the technology, so we had a meeting that included Meredith, and Stephen Mahoney, and Ruby, and Brad, and the technology consultants, and the representatives from PMA, and we're ready to put our technology package out to bid. And we actually, even on that piece, we, we've come in a pretty good place in terms of meeting the budget of $1,200 per student, which gave us a total budget of $900,000 for technology within the new school. And that $900 that MSBA funds actually, that $1,200 per student that MSBA funds does not include pre-K. And we're also gonna be providing technology for pre-K, because pre-K kids are gonna be in the building. So I think our number was around, our final number was around, the, our final budget was around 960,000, which, if you actually include our pre-K enrollment, is right on budget of the $1,200 per student. And we didn't, we didn't cut things out to meet that number. It's just, we made, we made some choices, we moved some things around that we wanted to do, and got some pricing that put us in a place of being on that budget number. Now, obviously, that will all go out to bid, and maybe it goes out to bid, it might even come in under that. So that was, that's kind of our most recent milestone on the project, was finalizing that technology piece to go out to bid. Our next piece will be finalizing the furniture. We've talked about furniture a bit last time, and we'll be finalizing the furniture budget, and that'll be going out to bid soon as well. And I don't know if the committee would like, I know I've been kinda giving generic updates, but I think every now and then it's good to bring back either Walter or Chad from PMA to kinda go through that monthly building project report, and that's something we can do in February if the committee would like, kinda give that more detailed overview of where we are on the project. So, I don't know if we can put that in the notes, that'd be great. The next, next meeting that's coming up for the school building committee is actually tomorrow evening. So on Tuesday, January 9th, we're gonna continue planning for our end-of-year events and at the old school, and our grand opening for the new school. So there's a subcommittee of the building committee that's looking at grand opening activities, and that group is gonna meet tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the central office for, for the school district.
Yeah.
And James is our representative on, on that committee.
Yep, and there's, the PTO is involved in that also. Scott, can you just maybe talk about, because it is starting to now become a reality of a possible crunch with three snow days under the belt already? That, that, that window between when we have to be out of the building and when we actually get out of the building is closing.
That is becoming a concern, obviously. Ultimately, in terms of making decisions on whether we have school or don't have school, student safety is gonna be the ultimate concern, and that's gonna be the decision maker. But it does become a little bit of a tight timeframe in terms of when we have to turn the building over. So right now, we are scheduled to turn the building over on June 22nd. Our last day of school was supposed to be June 14th, it's now June 19th. So we're gonna, getting closer and closer to that turnover date. So more snow days we have lead us closer to being there and having to move the turnover date. The impact that that would be, you know, if we had to change the turnover date, it gives the contractor a little bit of an out to say, you know, we're not gonna have the parking lot done for the opening of school. Where, where they have a time crunch in this project, and we've been saying this all along, the time crunch isn't finishing the building. The building will be finished in June. The time crunch for the contractor, and they've acknowledged this right from the beginning of the project, the real time crunch is gonna be raising, demolishing the two current buildings, and getting down the parking lot in place so we can open up the new building. I mean, we can open the new building without a parking lot in place, it's not gonna be a great thing. It's gonna, it will lead to some headaches in the first couple of weeks of school, I'm sure. But I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can work our way around it. Part of that being, and we've already started to discuss, you know, what possible, I'm not gonna go into the details of planning around that, but I can, in essence, say, at minimum, the current parking lot for the elementary school could stay in place. But that's still kind of a long distance from the building. You'd have to walk, walk from there to the building. Obviously, the goal is to have the real parking lot open. So the concern would be the more snow days we have, we, if we do have to push the turnover date back, doesn't mean the contractor won't have it done. It's just, once you change the turnover date, where we're saying we're gonna give them the building, it gives them the opportunity to say, well, you gave us the building a week late, so now we don't have to meet this timeline of having everything done and ready for the opening of school. So that obviously is a concern, but really a concern we can do nothing about, except for hope for not a lot of snow, and hope we don't have a lot more snow days. And, and, you know, obviously, saying this to the community again, we'd never make a decision on not having school. Student safety will be the priority in that decision, not whether or not we have to move the turnover date of the building.
I think when you look at this project as a whole, that, that as a scope of worst-case scenario isn't such a bad, isn't such a bad case really. It's something that will be managed.
Yeah, the, the building will be done and completed, and if there's some parking issues at the very beginning of opening of school, we'll manage them, Ruby will do an outstanding job and manage those things, it's like we've dealt with. Parking's been a concern over there anyhow, because we, you think about, we lost at least a third of our parking for the project anyhow. So we've been managing that now for really over a year, more than a year, a year and a half. So we'll, we'll work around whatever parking concerns we have in the first couple of weeks, if we have any.
And then the field project, I know we went pretty in-depth about that last time.
Yep, so we'll give a general overview of that, where that stands as well. So the field study committee continues to meet and plan the design for the track and field project. The next meeting scheduled is actually a joint meeting of the field study committee and the CPC, and that's this Wednesday, January 10th at 6 o'clock. I believe downstairs in meeting room 3, where that meeting's gonna occur. The goal for the committee is to come up with a plan to formally, to present to the CPC at their meeting on Thursday, January 25th, where they might decide to take some action on it. Obviously, I can't speak for the CPC and what they're gonna do, but they, at that time, they could possibly decide, take some action, and move forward with the project. Throughout this process, we've also talked about having a public hearing. And we've kind of morphed this together a little bit in terms of CPC through their process would also require a public hearing. So if they decide they're gonna be involved in the funding of this project, we would hold a joint public hearing between the field study committee and the CPC, which I think makes sense, to have the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the direction that we're going on in this project, ask questions about it, give input. That has not been scheduled as of yet, so right now there is not a date for a public hearing. The president, the meetings that are scheduled are this Wednesday, January 10th, joint meeting of the field study committee and CPC, and then the CPC meeting on January 25th. And, you know, the reality is, there may be some cost limitations that may lead us to do some value engineering, reduce the scope of the project. But that's a process we're gonna be working through over, over the next month. You know, Andrew is our representative on that committee, so I don't know if you wanna add any pieces to that, or any thoughts, but that's kinda where we stand right now.
Yeah, as we stand today, I mean, we're tightening up the project to make note exactly what we're gonna present. what we're going to present. And that's currently where we're at. I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of meetings in the next two months, and, you know, I'm happy to represent.
Any questions? So our last item there is upcoming events, and there's a sheet with a list of those. And I just have one request, Ruby, if you don't mind, on that list, something I meant to bring up a while ago and I never did, on the twenty-third at one fifty, there's an all-school assembly to send off Ms. Demarche. Could you, could you maybe explain what that is a little bit?
Yeah, do you want to talk about the World Marathon Challenge?
Do you mind?
I can as well.
I can do it together. I just, I meant to do this a long time ago when the letter came home and, and I just, every meeting I've forgot to bring this up.
Actually, that was part of the, so we've touched, we touched a little bit on what happened at the middle high school faculty meeting today. And at the elementary faculty meeting today, there was a presentation about the World Marathon Challenge.
Well, and I guess that was my point, to go along with, with what you did earlier.
Sure. So I can pull up a little bit of what I shared today. But most of people, Mrs. Demarche, she actually presented at one of our, our school committee meetings on the running trail, maybe a little over a year and a half ago or so. So she and Tara Berboza had come over to present and talk a lot about the running trail and how successful it was. So Mrs. Demarche is one of two phys ed teachers at the elementary school. She's worked in the district for, geez, long time, probably about twenty-two years. All right. So she's, she's, she just loves working with the kids and loves, you know, doing extracurricular activities in the morning and after school. She's also been very focused on her own running. She talked to Scott and I a little over a year ago about a dream of hers that she's been wanting to fulfill, and it's to run marathons. So in 2015, the World Marathon Challenge was, was started by, I'm not sure of the organization, but it's seven marathons in seven days on the seven continents. And Renee Demarche is going to, she is going to do this. On January twenty-third at the Carver Elementary School, we're going to have an all-school assembly with the kids and the teachers to send her off, to just cheer her on and give her a lot of inspiration and motivation as she gets set to jet off to Antarctica is where the first race will take place. So Renee has been fundraising over the last year. She's done several fundraising, fundraising activities throughout sort of the south coast. She's raising funds for two projects really, Boys, Boys and Girls Club of America, and you can help me if I get some of, the Cape Cod Division, and also to raise funds for the, the nature trail, but for the new school. Because as part of the new school plan, we only have part of that trail that will be preserved and part of the current trail, which is a wooded area. And then the rest will, we're working on putting some, probably some stone, that, that's part of the fundraising that Renee is helping to, to do. So again, the World Marathon Challenge is also known as the seven-seven-seven. This year, there are about fifty runners, she told me today, that will be participating in the, in the race. As I mentioned, they start in Antarctica and they'll end in North America. And it's one rate, one run every day for seven days.
And they go from the extremes of running in Antarctica to the extremes of running in Dubai.
Yeah. So I've got the, I was able to pull this up. So on January third, she's going to, January thirtieth, she's going to be running in Novo, Antarctica. On the thirty-first, Cape Town, South Africa. So they, they fly them to the start line. They, they get out, they run, they wait for the runners, they board the plane, they go to the next continent. So on January thirty-first, it'll be Cape Town, South Africa. Then on February first.
Let's pull the list up.
Perth, Australia.
This one has Madrid.
It's in that PowerPoint that I shared today of.
Yeah, it goes, instead of Madrid, it's Lisbon, but otherwise it's the same. Otherwise, it's the same.
Then on February second, it's Dubai.
No.
On February second, it's Dubai. On February third, Lisbon, Portugal. On February fourth, Cartagena, Colombia. And on February fifth, back home in Miami, Florida.
Wow.
Her daughter's going to be meeting her in Florida. And during this time, what we're going to do with the, the students is every morning when the students arrive and they go to the gym, we're going to share some pictures, hopefully that Renee might be able to send to us or that we'll be able to compile and share with the kids, just have on a rolling presentation. And hopefully, if we'll, we'll get a clip or two, we'll share that with them as well. Then Mr. Elder, her colleague, phys ed teacher, will be having what we call team huddles during our specialist time for the kids once they arrive to the special for the first ten or fifteen minutes, talking a bit about that continent that Renee has just been on or is about to be on, talk about some of the, you know, the climate, some of the, the feats that they have to accomplish to get the race done. Talk about maybe the language, music, some things that are parts of the continent or that country. And just try to make it educational, connect with, with Renee and really support her. Give her inspiration each day because, you know, she'll, she'll need it.
And we can certainly have her, she probably won't want to come for the February meeting because that's right, that's right at the conclusion of the marathon. So go to the Miami marathon and the school committee meeting.
For fetal, for fetal still being ice.
We'll have her invited for the March meeting because we're also, at that time, it'd probably be good to give an overview on where we are in terms of some funding we've raised for the track, for the track and where we are with that.
Fundraisers are on the nineteenth.
January, January nineteenth.
Each one?
The LCR.
Yes, she's very excited about this. She's been training for quite a long time. She's been doing a few talks. She's, was on one of the radio stations on the coast, on the Cape Cod to share a little bit about the race. She shared the podcast with me a couple of months ago. They were very fascinated in her, in her diet because she eats a plant-based diet and talked a lot about the training.
There's a, there's a little debate going on up here as to the length of the races. Are they, is there a set?
They're full marathon.
They're full marathons. She's, they are seven marathons in seven days. They're full marathons.
Twenty-four point six every day, every day.
She's going to run just under two hundred miles in one week.
To mention the gender.
With the flight.
She, she, her biggest concern is that not the cold weather because we've been in a cold climate, it's going to the.
The heat.
Dubai.
Dubai's, yeah.
And a crank of the heat in the house and product.
Well, I think even, even to point on that and what you're saying, and I, I've been meaning to bring this up for months and she sent the letter home a while ago. But, you know, to go on what Ms. Johnson said earlier with, I mean, she's living her dream while supporting local clubs and her own district and helping to do that. So I mean, that's, that's fantastic, you know?
Yeah, it's just very exciting for her. She's very, you know, and she's, she's, you know, she just sent an email to all the staff a little, little over an hour ago, just saying thank you and, you know, she's really appreciative of all that everyone has done to support her and, and to send her off. And, you know, it's just something that she is grateful to be at this point in her life where she can live this. She's been talking about it and wanting to do it. And she, you know, and she did say, you know, I'm not someone who is, is easily able to go up to the microphone and talk about these things. I just like to do it, you know, so.
Excellent.
Kind of like Tommy was saying earlier, you know, she doesn't want a ton of recognition. She just wants to do it.
To do it, yeah. Fantastic. Well, thank you very much, Ruby.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the explanation.
Tell her good luck for us.
You're welcome to come and join us at the assembly and send her off on the twenty-third at one fifty.
Thank you. Meredith, want to go back to that? Go back to a fundraiser she's running on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Andy was just asking a question about it. I don't know a lot of details, but I'll accept that.
Hold on, I'm going, sorry.
So she is running a fundraiser at the Garibaldi Club in Plymouth on January nineteenth, seven o'clock. I believe it's dinner and dancing and a fun night out.
It's a game.
That's a game, yeah. That's a fun game.
It's a dice game.
Yeah, I played that. That's fun. That's a good game.
I think if I click by now.
We'll find out.
It's now, but we did. Hold on. When are they putting it on there?
But actually, it'd be twenty dollars, but it'd be beneficial if we just said what the website was. So what's, what's the website, Meredith?
Dreamrunforkids.com. And can I just add?
And you can make individual donations at that website.
I just think the fact that she's modeling the health and wellness piece for kids is awesome. I think it's great.
Health and wellness to the extreme.
I don't really use health and wellness, but yeah.
It is awesome. You got it.
So what, what part of that discussion is we've just given the committee a, a list of events coming up within the school district for the next two months for January and February, just so members are aware. Obviously, people are invited to attend and participate in any, any of these upcoming events. We'll let the committee take a look at. I think that's, I think that's all we have.